Good evening and welcome to the Tiffin City Board of Education Regular Meeting. We are privileged to have the Quiz Bowl team and Assistant Coach Samantha Lichtenberger presenting the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, the Quiz Bowl, tell us about your success.
Coach Lynn Donovan couldn't get here tonight due to weather, so I'm here representing the team as well as Gavin Robinson, one of our captains, Trevor Blodgett, and Jack Burkholder are here as well. We've had quite a good run in the past 2018, 2019. Last spring, we went to OAC Regionals where we placed third. We also went to NAQT State for the first time. Those OAC and NAQT are styles of Quiz Bowl questions that we do. We have also finished third, excuse me, we finished third in OAC Regionals. We won the league regular season for the third time in a row. We placed second in that final tournament. And then every year, we have the Colombian Exposition at Colombian High School, which is a tournament for a variety of Quiz Bowl teams in the area. We placed very well at our own tournament as well, and we'd like to mention that that success is really thanks to a lot of the sponsors that we had, including Buffalo Wild Wings, Old Ford Bank, Stein Metz Graphics, and James C. Skidmore IV, as well as a generous donation by the Tiffin Columbian Alumni Association. We'd like to thank Tiffin City Schools for all their continued support. Coming up, we are going to be trying to organize Buffalo Wild Wings Night for the league to bring awareness of the work that these kids do. In Quiz Bowl, they really learn that it's not enough to just be smart. You've gotta, you know, use those smarts in a variety of ways. Use your context clues, think on your feet, and not be afraid to nag, not be afraid to be wrong every once in a while.
Who's wrong most?
Oh.
Who's the most frequently wrong answer?
Us three right here.
Right.
Or are you talking about two?
Well, just, let's not talk about anybody else. Let's just talk about the present company.
Probably tied between us two. I think we do it frequently because we're early buzzers, because you get bonus if you buzz in earlier in the question. And us two tend to score quite a bit, and those who score a lot try to get in early to get, and you, sometimes you don't have all the context that you need, so you nag, even though it was a sufficient answer for the time that you gave it.
Right. However, the benefits can very much outweigh the problems sometimes, though.
Right, so it's not like at home, you're watching Jeopardy, and, "Oh, I knew that. Oh, I knew that." No, it's not like that, is it?
No.
You pretty much have to be able to think quickly and have the answer. It's a pretty good idea, right, after that?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. So now, let me just ask about this Buffalo Wild Wings thing, because I think, you know, that's associated with sports, and I know, you know, Mr. Blodgett is like a sports expert. So will this be a sports-related Quiz Bowl?
I think it's probably more general.
No, I think it would probably be more general. What do you think?
Yeah.
Yeah, more just activity or club, if you can say that.
Do you want to talk about the difference between what a normal Quiz Bowl competition would be and a trash Quiz Bowl competition?
Oh, that's a fun one. Here.
All right.
Yeah. So, a normal one will ask questions from like what we study in school, science, math, history, geography, whatever. However, trash is pretty much purely pop culture. So they'll ask questions about movies, TV shows, video games, all those sorts of things, sports. It's kind of refreshing sometimes after playing the normal thing to just go and have fun at a trash tournament.
Sure, yeah. Trash is always good, right?
Yeah.
Yep.
Well, thank you very much. Appreciate you showing up tonight on your day off, right?
Yeah.
Is it day off today?
Yes, we did, yes, we did, but yeah.
Congratulations and good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're very happy to be here. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Mr. Henry?
Here.
Dr. Hoya?
Here.
Mr. Perez?
Here.
Mr. Widman?
Here.
Dr. Case?
Here. Adopt the agenda. There were no changes.
None.
Absolutely.
Second?
Moved by Henry, second by Widman. Roll.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. Widman?
Yes.
Dr. Hoya?
Yes.
Mr. Perez?
Yes.
Yes. Board reports, committee reports, first is Business Advisory Council, and I am in fact the chair of that. We met on January 17th at 8:00 a.m. at the Tiffin Chamber of Commerce meeting room. And there, we reviewed last year's accomplishments. We were visited by Hami Navarette, I think I said that right? And this is a guest of the meeting was interested in advancing some of our science curriculum in terms of taking students into a business setting, asking some businesses to commit one full day a month, and in a problem-solving fashion. He works at Crown Battery, and he's already had the initiative to take with Mr. Mason's middle school science class up to the University of Toledo. They, I think he's done it two years. They've used the electron microscope on what the students being able to look at things like insect parts and things like that under electron microscope. So, he's very passionate. I enjoyed hearing from him, and I think we're gonna try and explore options there. We talked about the new course, the Innovation in Science and Technology. We talked about career connections, graduate pathways to success. We talked about career speakers. We have an agenda, Pat Smith has an agenda for that. We looked at National Machinery Engineering Scholarship, which in the past two years, I think, one last year, has not been utilized, and that is a $10,000 a year scholarship that includes work opportunities that National Machinery would fund. They have openings for two a year, so we'll try to get that information out to the community. Let's see, job shadowing books were presented, and a new project, summer employment days to be implemented at the high school. Employees wanting to hire for summer will be allowed to set up in front of the hallway during lunch, and there'll be two to three employers per day allowing students to be interviewed, and that will be in February and March. The Career Fair Day, it will be March 27th this year in the gym. New items include the event will be over by 1:00, and the students' beers come back during their lunch to make more contacts. We brought up briefly an opportunity. I proposed the possibility of using local businesses who might assist us with the ability for students who would like to work to get money for the pay, to play or pay for participation. So we're looking at local companies or businesses that might be interested in hiring some of our students or athletes and/or participants in extracurricular activities. And then I also spoke about the possibility of working towards developing a financial education opportunities, in that we have a lot of pathways towards career and technology and academics. What we don't have is the, every business that comes to our business, our Business Day, Jobs Fair, will have accounting firms or people who do accounting work at each of those facilities, but rarely do we have, we don't have one place where the kids can go and say, "Hey, I'm interested in accounting. Who would I talk to?" And one of our local bankers is a member of our committee, Patricia Reinhardt, Superior Credit Loan and Union. She has a curriculum she's already has utilized, so we're gonna talk to her about introducing some of that education in classrooms, and the possibility of integrating that with the Junior Achievement Curriculum, which already exists as well. Next meeting will be February 21st, again at the Tiffin Chamber of Commerce. Let's see, Finance Committee, Mr. Perez.
We met on January 15th, and we went over the monthly financial reports. And basically, at this point, as of December 31st, we had $17,230,000 in our cash balance, correct? That's where it's, okay. Okay. And then, we were after completing, we're, half of our fiscal year, we're, 43.8% of all our appropriations were expended. However, we're still waiting for some outstanding bills regarding services that we'll get billed for later. And at this point, there's no issues to be concerned with in terms of our tax forecast. We went over the summary check register, and also discussed updates in terms of the Magic Tunnel update, but we're all familiar with what happened at the last meeting. And we did get presented with the Auditor Award, and that was presented by the Ohio Auditor of the State for, let's see, for School District Excellence in Financial Reporting. And our next meeting is Tuesday, February 19th at 5:15. Thank you.
Very good. Any questions for Mr. Perez? Program Committee, Mr. Henry?
The Program Committee did not meet in January. We will be meeting on February 20 at 5:15 p.m. in the Administration Building.
Thank you. Support Services, Dr. Hoya?
Support Services did meet on Friday, January 18th in the Administration Building. We were discussing the Technology Department, some of the high school counselors had their computer systems replaced. We were getting, we're gonna get a 75-inch flat screen for the Colombian cafeteria. There were some changes to the network, and from the transportation side, we're gonna get two new buses. And we decided what's gonna be the wheelchair-accessible bus, and that will be air-conditioned. We also discussed the bus schedule as sent, if we implement a 50-minute delay of Wednesdays in next school year collaboration. For maintenance, we talked about our ID badges, the new ID badges we receive. They're working well with the exception of one door at Noble, and I think that's been their direct decline. We were talking, discussed the Raptor, which is the visitor identification system. They scan your driver's license, they print a cool badge that you get to wear if you're gonna need it to go into the buildings. Tomorrow, we're gonna be discussing the Trac. We talked about the expansion project here at the TMS. And then also, we talked about Wayne Coleman from Garment Miller coming to speak with us about the ELPP and our local share with the schools. Our next meeting will be Friday, I'm sorry, yeah, Friday, February 15th at the Administration Building.
Thank you, Dr. Hoya. Any questions for Dr. Hoya?
Yeah, I was wondering, why are we getting a TV?
They're gonna have, they're gonna hand it up.
They're gonna, they're putting him up for, we're having, we have banquets and like students, speakers for students, career speakers. We want some way, instead of setting up a projection machine, which doesn't work very well, it'll be a touchscreen that'll allow people to show presentations.
That makes sense.
Very good. The Personnel Committee did not meet. Records Committee did meet on January the 8th, and rather lengthy meeting, but we survived. We did renew the records retention schedule from previous year, and I think it lasted about two minutes. Any questions? If so, let's go share. Legislative update, Mr. Perez?
The legislation on the handwriting, or handwriting did pass, so we've already have it implanted in our programs already. Is it up to third grade that they have to do it? And the bills on the property challenges, all that, it didn't go anywhere as far as I know. It didn't pass, correct? So.
Any questions for Mr. Perez? The Vanguard Sentinel update?
The Vanguard Sentinel Board met last Thursday. Everything went well. We met in Fremont. We reorganized the board there. I will stay on as the Vice President for this coming year, and talking about recruiting and talking with students for next school year.
Very good. Any questions for Mr. Widman? Pre-K five task force, I think, Dr. Hoya, you are the chair, but you've not met?
We did, yeah. When are we, Mr. Robinson?
I think we're, we could discuss after the meeting, the previous work session, you know, will be, if we're going to highly consider the ELPP, then we'll want to continue to meet on a regular basis and continue our work. I think if it's a matter of, we're not gonna go that route, and we're looking at probably five to six years out, I'm not so sure we have to work at the same type of pace.
And we will discuss the ELPP at?
I think he's gonna have an answer for sure with that legislation next week.
We'll hear from Wayne first.
Yes.
Okay, very good.
Okay, thank you. Student Representatives, Kirsten?
Band and choir are both preparing for OMAA competition. There's OMAA, which is in March, and then there's the individual OMAA for solo and ensemble, and that's coming up in the second week of February, if anyone wants to see that. And then Jazz Band is choosing repertoire for the winter concert. And RTTG, which is not a part of Tiffin City Schools, but we're doing the bullying plays, which are for some of the students, are going to see those, I think, the Discovery Series. That's all.
And for my report, Colombian Student Council had a teacher versus students Quiz Bowl tournament. I think it's very fitting to report on it, since we had the Quiz Bowl here today. This took place last Tuesday. Students battled against staff members to show off their knowledge in different subject areas. The teachers won one game, and the students won three games. Colombian students will have the opportunity to take the ASVAB next Tuesday. This test is an entrance exam for the military, but also get suggested jobs and occupations that suit well with the students' interests and performances. High school students begin scheduling next week, starting with 11th graders working down through the grade levels. Parents and students are encouraged to discuss future classroom enrollment, including AP and CCP classes. Information is available in the main office for those who missed the Student Parent Curriculum Information Night. TMS Spirit Week begins February 3rd. Student Council will be selling suckers for middle school students to send to their friends. They will also have the TMS Valentine's Day Dance on Friday at 7:00 p.m., and there's a scheduled makeup date for next Friday if the dance were to be canceled due to weather. And then, just a reminder that the TC Athletic Boosters meet on the second Monday of each month in the TC HS Cafeteria, so please consider supporting our local tornado athletics and getting involved in the Booster Club.
Very good. Any questions for our student representatives? Thank you very much, Kirsten and Andrew. Superintendent's Report.
Good, thank you, Dr. Case. Just wanna start by thanking all of you, all of our board members and our student reps. January is Board Recognition Month across the state of Ohio. And Boards of Education have longstanding and tested institution in Ohio's history. School Board members make policies, approve contracts with employees, help choose curriculum, adopt budgets, and select the superintendent and treasurer to administer the district. They do all these tasks with the emphasis of what's best for children in mind. Being an effective school board member is no easy task, particularly in today's climate of change and challenge. School Board members need to be knowledgeable about many complex educational and social issues, and carry out initiatives and directives from both the state and federal governments. To face these demands in governing our public schools, they give countless hours of their personal time. Through dedicated, responsible endeavors, school board members serve the public interest and serve the needs of our kids. They ensure that decisions about public schools are made as close to the needs of our communities as possible. Their public service is an excellent example for young and old alike of the tradition of volunteerism and its hallmark in American society. This January, local communities are invited to honor the contributions and dedications of their local school boards, those locally elected citizens who make decisions that affect and influence the direct education of our youth. Tiffin, the Tiffin City School Board is just one of 700 boards across Ohio. We would like to say thank you to you, and again, want to thank you for participating in what's perhaps the purest grassroots democratic principles upon which this republic was founded. Our school board members make a difference in our community for every child and every day. Thank you very much. Thank you. It is a token of appreciation, we have just a notebook for you that says Tiffin City Schools, and Mrs. Reinhardt also wanted to give you guys all a Kennedy t-shirt from that perspective, so again, just a small token, but thank you for all of your service.
Thank you.
Moving along, Graduate Pathway to Success Update, again, which is our early college program with Tiffin University. We have 41 students and families scheduled to interview and take the Accuplacer Early College Test. Of these 41 students, they're all eighth graders, and this will be part of our second cohort with our GPS program. We had 18 interviews scheduled for yesterday, but we had to reschedule all those interviews due to Tiffin University closing yesterday. Want to give a special thanks to Jen Losi, who spent a good deal of her time yesterday on the telephone rescheduling those appointments. They had interviews tonight, and again, our students were very, very successful with that Accuplacer, which is a college entrance exam, and we're taking it for writing, for them to get into the program. And I think this is a testament to our teachers, pre-K through eight, because our students are qualifying for, to be able to take college at an eighth-grade level, and have the writing skills to be able to test college-ready. So that's really, really good. Our goal this year, and we have about, we have 34 students in our current program, first cohort, our goal was to hit 50. I truly think right now with 41, as word gets out, that students are scoring well, and more students will want to try, I believe we'll be very, very close to that number.
And last year's percentage rate for the placement was very good.
Very, very good. Yep, very, very good. And for those students who don't quite hit it, we'll provide some intervention, and they'll take it again. So, so good, so we're excited about that. Next, I actually have Jen Losi, who's gonna come up and talk to the board and the community about our plan, what's currently happening in our buildings for pre-K through five literacy, what we have planned for the future, and really, as we continue to have a focus, and I believe our board, one of our board's large focuses and laser-like focuses, improving literacy instruction within our district, from a birth through three area that we're focusing on. So I asked Jen to come up with just an update as to exactly where we're at and where we're headed in the future.
I'd like to thank the Board of Education again for your service, as it is School Board Appreciation Month, and I promise to keep this short and sweet. However, I do want to stress how very important literacy is to Tiffin City Schools and to the Tiffin community. The work that we're gonna focus on right now, we're gonna look at pre-K to five, because our foundation is actually being built with our preschool students, and then also with Dr. Case's foundation. We're soon going to be working below that into our children who are born in Tiffin City in Seneca County. So our Lincoln Pre-K program, we have four classrooms that are dedicated to providing services to meet our students' needs. Each of those classrooms has a goal focused on letter recognition, which is the foundational skill that we need in order for our students to be successful. We also would be remiss if we didn't recognize and thank our other area preschools, as they too are working to build that foundation. At Washington Elementary, three years ago, the district made the decision to support literacy and math by putting aides in those classrooms. We have Read to Succeed with one supervisor, 13 mentors, and they are serving 30 students. Read to Succeed is a one-on-one or very small group mentoring program where they work specifically on literacy skills. Phonics First Level One Training has been provided to all of the teachers in Washington, and there are several staff members that have moved on to Level Two Training. We have two technology-based interventions being utilized in Washington. One is Hear Builders that is focused on our students who receive speech services, and it also works to assist our students who are going through the response to intervention process. Those are our students who are identified to be in need or of concern as related to literacy skills. We have two Title I teachers focused on providing literacy support currently at Washington. Last year, thanks to Title I funds, we were able to purchase about $8,000 in Phonison-Pennell leveled readers to support the intervention or enrichment practices that we need. Also, Tiffin University has a partnership with Washington, and it's the second-in-seven foundation where every student in Washington is given a free book once a year. When we look at Kraut, we have Read to Succeed with one supervisor, 19 mentors, and they are currently serving 30 students. Earlier in the year, they had been serving more students, but within that schedule, there were times when they were only serving students one time a week, and studies show in order for the program to be effective, it needs to be done at least three times a week. So we've readjusted that schedule, and any third grader that's being seen through that program is now being guaranteed a minimum of three times a week as part of that program. Phonics First Level One Training, again, has been provided to all of the staff members in that building, and there are several that have moved on to Level Two Training. Technology-Based Intervention, they utilize Hear Builders with their speech students along with their response to intervention students. They too have two Title I teachers that are focused on providing literacy support, and again, thanks to Title I dollars, they were able to purchase about $8,000 in leveled readers to further assist their intervention and enrichment needs. Noble Elementary, we have a Read to Succeed program with one supervisor, 12 mentors, and with those 12 mentors, they boast the ability to serve 35 students. Noble also has been very fortunate this year, as they received the grant, that they have an after-school program, which is currently serving about 40 students. Our capacity for that program is 75, and we're working very hard to get that filled. Technology-Based Intervention, as part of that after-school program that is being utilized is called iReady, and it is a very comprehensive program that specifically meets those students' needs once they do an assessment piece within that program. District-wide, last year, we did some curriculum mapping alignment. We worked with K through 12. We did not just focus on literacy. We did curriculum mapping in regards to English Language Arts, Math, Science, and Social Studies. This year, we have had professional development that was focused specifically on reading and writing instruction for our K through eight staff members, and that's been provided by Jamie Barrows. She's a literacy coach with the North Central Ohio Educational Service Center. Things that Jamie has worked on is building the foundation and furthering our staff's understanding in regards to guided reading practices, how to implement reading assessments, how to create plans based upon those assessments, and then also, she is soon going to be looking at our materials and how we can align things and do things a little bit differently. We currently have a few days left with Jamie, and we're trying to utilize those days in the best interest of our staff members, and we have surveyed them, and we're gathering their interest and their needs in order for us to determine what those specific days are gonna look like and when they will be scheduled. Future plans. Summer inter- Summer intervention is going to be provided for our students who are currently kindergarten through two students, and it will address their identified needs in order to prepare them for 2019, 2020. That program will be created with input from the building principals along with the staff. We are also looking at an additional Title I teacher, which will be added to Washington. That Title I teacher will be focusing on our kindergarten students so that we can make sure we give them early intervention, and we can hopefully, again, build that foundation strong as we progress to move on to the next grades. We're also looking to have continued literacy work with Jamie Barrows next school year, but what we're hoping to do with that work is to move beyond the professional development experience where she teaches and models, whereas she moves into the classroom and really coaches and works with the staff to more so build up their abilities and their skills and their comfort with the information that they've been given. Merrill Hill and I are exploring some possible options to bring in a structured literacy program to address our special education students' needs, and then also, in 2019, 2020, we will be looking to review literacy materials, because for the 2020-2021 school year, we'll be doing an adoption for literacy materials for grades K through five. Dr. Gase and his wife Anne, we cannot thank enough, as they have worked very hard to bring the Dolly Parton Imagination Library to Tiffin, Ohio, and to address and meet our students' needs, actually not our students' needs, to meet our community's needs and to put books in the hands of those youth, starting from the time they are born. And that's a very exciting opportunity for us. Thank you very much for that. Dr. Sue says, "The more that you read, the more things you will know. The more you learn, the more places you'll go." We know this not just for our students, but for ourselves. We have a lot of learning, we have a lot of studying to do, but we know, as we move, as we learn, as we progress, we will only get stronger if we work together. Together, we will grow to help our students. Not just as teachers will we grow, we will grow as a community, and we will help our students to grow in turn. I want to thank you for the opportunity to talk to today, and if you have any questions, please let me know.
I have one question. The mentors.
Yes.
What qualifications or what requirements are there for mentors?
Okay. Good question. We look for mentors who are willing to donate time to the schools. They do have to undergo a background check, and then, once they have been approved through that background check, then based upon their schedule and the schedule availability of our students, we try to make matches within our buildings.
And if someone was interested, how would they go about inquiring?
Probably the easiest thing to do would be to contact the building principal, because I'm pretty sure they would have an interest in a specific building, and then that principal can put them in touch with our Read to Succeed site manager.
Very good.
Yep.
And the, one other thing, I guess I have, the program, the K through eight literacy program, does that include the, oh, what's the, what's the, the writing contest?
Oh, Power of the Pen?
Power of the Pen, yes.
Power of the Pen. No, I did not incorporate Power of the Pen into that. That was an oversight. I know that Sarah Connor works very hard with Power of the Pen, and in fact, one of our interviewees this evening shared her involvement and excitement about Power of the Pen and that experience that she's having.
And that stops at eighth grade, or do we don't have it in the high school? Is that right?
No.
Is there, is that because nobody's expressed an interest, or is that because we don't have the, we don't have a teacher for it?
It's something that I can look into and get further information on. Thank you, Kirsten, for helping.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions for Jen?
I'd just like to say, you know, Jen has done an incredible job of taking our curriculum assessment that you guys had done shortly before I arrived, and taking that to heart and implementing those recommendations. And I think that when we look about, when we take a look at improving literacy as a whole, I don't think there's a quick fix. I think it's, you know, it's intentional professional development, it's supporting our teachers, it's listening to our teachers when we hear what their needs are. I think it's intervention at our earliest programs, and I really believe that we're on the right track, and I think Jen has done an outstanding job with her leadership in taking that document and utilizing it to its fullest potential in the district. It's a good job, Jen.
I appreciate that, but true credit has to go to our teachers. They are phenomenal. They work hard every single day. They have accepted the assistance, and they have provided a lot of good quality feedback along the way in order for us to continue to meet their needs so that they can better meet our students' needs. So thank you to the teachers. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Good, just two more things. Update on the alumni project. We began pulling student files from the years of 1998 to 2018 this, last week, in entering the required fields that Publishing Concepts is requiring for the project. And we currently have 500 alumni entered and hope to finish that project from our end of our task required by February. So hopefully, by next fall, we will be completely on track with an updated alumni database that's accurate and one that we'll be able to continue to message our graduates and past graduates in the future. Last thing I was going to talk about was collaboration time, and Danielle Bluest and Lauren Burks presented to the board at our November Board of Education meeting on developing a mechanism where teachers can utilize common time that is 100% focused on student learning. The program committee was supportive of recommending a delay. We talked about a Wednesday proposal from September through May. During this time, collaboration sessions would focus on the four essential questions, and that's really, what is it kids need to know? How will we know if they've learned it? What do we do if students don't learn? And what do we do if students already know it? And just to make that simpler, they're focused on curriculum, focused on assessment, focused on intervention, and focused on enrichment from that perspective. Chris Widman, our board president then, a few days after the meeting, asked me a really good question. And the question he asked me was, "Are our principals prepared and willing to take on this additional responsibility of ensuring this time's focused, productive, and drives positive results?" And my response was yes, but it motivated me to go back and talk to each of our principals about their belief in making this happen, and will, do they believe it'll improve student learning and teacher effectiveness? They all are supportive and believe that collaboration time will make a positive and significant impact. At our last administration meeting, we listed possible challenges that would result from a modified schedule. And here's a list that we've been working on over the past month. What will happen with the TU GPS courses taught at Columbia? Our answer to that is, in talking to Tiffin University, we won't schedule classes on Wednesday, if that's the route we'll go, and Tiffin University will be flexible in making that happen for us. The next question was, what impact would a delayed schedule have on our Sentinel students? We decided that the best way to take care of that would be a dedicated bus route for our Sentinel students to make sure that they're on class on time. What impact would this have on Calvert Bridges in NCA, NCA, who utilize our transportation services? So with that, the state says that we have to bus to their calendar, but we can bus to our times from that perspective. So it would be a matter of notification, and there's certain days where they have professional development where they're required for their own transportation because of delays to begin with. What will the aides do during the late start? We have lots and lots of trainings called Public School Works, and I'm sure our employees can vouch for that that are here today, that they could work on. We have targeted trainings that we'd like to do more with our aides, and also, we'll probably utilize them for some of the supervision of students who arrive early. How do we address families' needs with childcare during the late start? I think, I think one of the things that I've been tasked to do is to explore before and after-school programming, which I plan on doing before this spring. What happens if we delay school? We would shorten or delay, we would shorten our delay, and obviously, just have a one-hour delay, and we would cancel our collaboration time. How do we address breakfast needs? We would have a grab-and-go breakfast on Wednesdays. And then, in our conversation with Lincoln, you know, initially, Michelle brought up the fact that on Fridays, right now, which is their non-student data, to move that data possibly on Wednesday. We've gotten some input back from the staff that that might be an issue midweek, where they would actually have that transition where the kids break from school during a Wednesday, and it might, it might be a hard, harder for our students to make that transition. So that's something we need to look at a little bit more. Some of the other concerns, me and Scotty were discussing today with Randy, is some of our, some of our employees, part-time employees like our bus drivers, actually have day jobs, other day jobs. So how will they get to that work? And we sort of, we sort of, we sort of kicked around that, and we actually kicked around perhaps another idea that will allow our teachers to have the same amount of time, but maybe it would be a little bit less stress on families. And Scotty threw out the idea of having certain months where you have scheduled twice a month, two-hour delays. So let's say, for instance, in September and October, you have two two-hour delays; in November, because you have a holiday, it's one; December, you have a holiday, it's one. Taking a look at the calendar, it would throw out about 26, I'm sorry, 13 scheduled delays. With those, with those, with those two-hour blocks is 26 hours. We talked about giving up a professional development day that we have scheduled currently, three. I talked to TEA about the possibility of giving up one. So it shortens us from a standpoint of student time to 20 hours. We are well above our minimum hours. As a matter of fact, for seven through 12, the minimum school hours is 1,001 hours that the state says you have to get in. So we're currently at 1,144. For six, I'm sorry, K through six, it's 910 hours, and currently, right now, we're at 1,100 hours. So we're well above that threshold. So this is something I want to bring back to the board next month. I want to continue to have dialogue. I'd like to do a survey with staff to see exactly where they are with this. I could see some of the benefits to the twice-a-month from the standpoint of they would have time, even more time to implement exactly what they're working on with their students till they come back. But I would, again, like to pose this to staff, to see, all staff in our district, to see what challenges it would bring and how we would address those.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other?
That concludes my report.
Can I follow up with a question on that? So you're talking about a late start, once a month, maybe twice a month, several times? So it wouldn't be every Wednesday?
It wouldn't be every Wednesday, so it would be, it would be, the way I looked at it was, would be in September, twice, in October, twice, in November, once, December, once, anytime we had the holiday, like during the month of spring break, once.
And then, but you said you were looking in terms of the before and after. Would that be busing the children or having a place that they could be dropped off so the parents can continue to work their regular schedules?
Under that two-hour delay, the busing, the busing would go as normal. There'd be no transfer, it would be just like we have a two-hour delay.
And so have you considered maybe doing a survey, monkey of the parents, to see how many of them could actually accommodate? Because that is daycare.
Yep.
And two-hour delays, I know in my experience, has people already calling off. It messes with the employers in the area that, you know, they don't have babysitters that can do that, or change the pickup points for the schools, buses.
Yep. Okay, we could do that.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Barber. Assistant Superintendent Report and Recommendations, Mr. Bowles.
Thank you, Dr. Gase. It is my honor and pleasure and privilege to recognize and announce our second quarter Crystal Apple Award winners. So at this time, I'd like to ask Dr. Gase to come to the podium. And our first award winner for the second quarter, Kristi Reimbold, please come up to the podium. Kristi is our support staff. Kristi is our support staff award winner for the second quarter, has worked in the district since 2011, and currently works with our TCC program as a credit recovery specialist. She has worked with several students and helped them earn some deficient credits and has proven to be invaluable with her work. So, in the support staff recognition, there are four areas of excellence that we look for in our nominees, and I just want to read off of her nomination form. Kristi was recommended by, or nominated by the TCC staff, Emily Boone, Renee Lacy, Molly Ludhart, Ryan Otney, Travis Wise. Additionally, Kristi was also nominated by our high school principal, Forrest Trisler. So in the area of teamwork, Kristi worked for two years as a substitute science teacher in the Tiffin-Columbian Connections Program to fill required positions. Since that time, Kristi has taken over the credit recovery program. She continuously works with the TCC teachers and the rest of the high school staff to keep everyone updated on student progress towards graduation. She also works with all the guidance counselors to ensure completed grades are added to the student transcripts. In the area of commitment, Kristi provides motivation to students and encouragement to continue working in their online classes. She shares them on, pushes them to work harder, and celebrates their successes. Kristi builds a strong relationship with each student, and she has made herself available to students by email outside of, outside of school, so they may continue making progress towards their credit. In the area of leadership, Kristi is a leader and strong role model for many of Columbia's at-risk students. She treats all of her students fairly and devotes time to each one of them. Kristi is very knowledgeable in all the content areas being taught and uses this background to assist students in their understanding of the course material. The students look very comfortably to her for help, guidance, and support each and every day. In the area of taking pride in the work, Mrs. Reimbold has had success in students achieving credits over the past five years. She is a cheerleader for our students and displays a positive attitude. Kristi has created a TCC family graduation wall. There are pictures of the TCC students that have graduated from the program. This provides a visual for current students to aspire to graduate and be part of that family. In addition, Kristi has led students to earn hundreds of credits in her time as credit recovery teacher. Credit recovery students clearly reveal that she is the reason they achieve graduation with their classes. This has helped Columbia's graduation rate increase over the last several years. The TCC team recognizes that Mrs. Reimbold is a valuable asset to Tiffin City Schools. Congratulations, Kristi, on receiving the Crystal Apple Award, and thank you for all you do for our students and staff. We are very proud of you and fortunate to have you as part of the TCC family. Thank you, Kristi.
I just want to say that having, my daughter, before she went off to medical school, did work with the Apex classes and the credit recovery, and I watched how she operated. And I know these students require a little extra.
Yes.
And make yourself available.
Yes.
It's huge. It's huge, because she was doing emails and text messages at all hours at night. Making yourself available, it makes a difference. And a lot of these students, unfortunately, have felt neglected. Am I right?
Yes.
I mean, they really do not feel that they've been, their needs have been addressed, or that, for whatever reason, the time of their lives maybe didn't match with the needs that they, that they had at the time. that they had at the time. And so what you're doing is remarkable.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our certified staff award winner for the second quarter is Mrs. Alicia Goshi. Alicia, would you please come forward? Alicia has worked with us since 2010. She's taught at Clinton, Noble, and currently she is a seventh-grade reading teacher here at Tiffin Middle School. Alicia was nominated by TMS principal, Mr. Sean Murphy, and Alicia displayed excellence in the areas of teamwork, commitment, leadership, taking pride in her work as well. So let me read from her nomination form as well. In the area of teamwork, Alicia has the ability to implement an effective classroom management plan that minimizes distractions while creating an engaging, student-friendly environment. She conducts focused and meaningful discussions during her lessons that challenge students to put forth their best effort each and every day. In the area of commitment, Alicia is committed to the improvement of the Tiffin Middle School. Two of her projects include, one, management of the building technology carts. She organizes and communicates a schedule to ensure the staff has access to all technology. And number two, Alicia meets daily with her colleagues during her lunch. She is committed to using this time as an opportunity to collaborate and grow in their profession and in their craft. In the area of leadership, Alicia is a trusted and well-respected member of the middle school staff. She always conducts herself in a professional manner. Thus, Alicia has built a tremendous amount of credibility through her relationships with students and staff alike. In the area of taking pride in her work, in a particular period that had students with a fair amount of behavior concerns, found the students engaged and focused on class work. It was evident high expectations and a positive rapport was in place. Plus, Alicia's line of questions inspired students to reflect on their own character and their own beliefs. This type of discussion aligns with Tiffin Middle School's focus of delivering a great educational experience for all of our students. In addition, Alicia has been rated as most effective in our value-added measure and has achieved a rating of accomplished in her last two full evaluations. Congratulations, Alicia, on receiving the Crystal Apple Award and thank you for all you do for our students. We are very proud of you and we are very fortunate to have you as part of the TCS family. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Alicia.
Do you have to say a few words?
I want to take this opportunity to thank Mr. Murphy for nominating me for this award, my family for their continued support, and my colleagues with whom I work every day. I am proud to work with such a fabulous team at TMS. Since my start with Tiffin City Schools in 2010, I have had the opportunity to work with several outstanding role models, teachers, administrators, other staff, and students who also demonstrate the characteristics of this award. It is through their leadership and demonstration of character that I continue to grow as an educator. So thank you.
And thank you, Mr. Boles, for the presentation.
Thank you. Two more items. The, the first of the two is the Career Exploration Class. This, this was implemented last year and it's intended for incoming freshmen to explore the different opportunities available to them through Sentinel Career and Tech Center. We have some, some meetings coming up here later this week and early next week. The student meeting will be on January 24th during their intermural time where representatives from Sentinel will come in and talk to the students about the program, kind of give them an overview and get them a little excited about it. And then we'll bring the parents in on January 29th here at Tiffin Middle School at 6:30. And again, representatives from Sentinel will be here to explain the program to the parents and get kids in the mode of signing up for scheduling. As Andrew alluded to earlier and Mr. Barber in his report, it's scheduling time already. It's hard to believe that we're to that point in the school year. But this is an awesome opportunity for our students, just as the GPS student program gets kids moving towards a college readiness program. This here is really, really a great opportunity for students to explore up to six programs in the career tech field and kind of get an idea of what direction they may want to go beyond their freshman year of high school. So that is coming up again later this week and then the parent meeting on Tuesday, the 29th at 6:30 here at the middle school. Any questions about the Career Exploration Program? And then the, the final item I have is the Athletic Director Timeline. As you know, we have Mr. Kizabeth filling in as an interim for this school year. Mr. Kizabeth is doing an outstanding job. However, he has made it very clear that this is not what he wants to continue to do beyond this year. So we did post the position right there before the break in December. And so a tentative timeline that we're looking at is that we're going to close the application window on February 1st. We're going to have first-round interviews from February 11th through February 15th. Second-round interviews will be from February 18th through the 20th. We're going to hopefully offer the position on February 22nd to our strongest candidate and then hopefully have board approval at our February 25th board meeting. So first-round interviews will be conducted through Mr. Trisler, Mr. DeVore, myself, and Mr. Kizabeth. And the second round will bring in some coaches and some athletic boosters. Since the Athletic Director works very closely with the athletic boosters, we'll bring in the booster president and move forward from there. So that is the tentative timeline and we'll do our best to adhere to that timeline. Any questions for me?
Thank you, Mr. Boles.
Thank you.
Director of Operations, Scott?
Yes, I'd like to talk about track replacement. I have one quote from Amity Bay Turf Center that was presented to me, that's for a latex track that's kind of currently the style track that we have. And then tomorrow, we're meeting with Brian Cole, who has put in Heiderberg Track, which is a rolled rubber style track, which is a completely different. It's going to be a little more money. We want to look at that. Brian Cole is a local guy and he's very interested in just making sure, no matter what we're doing, we do the right thing, whether we go with a product of his or a different style track. So we're having that meeting tomorrow, tomorrow evening.
So which track is faster?
I have no idea. Coach Karani really liked Heiderberg's new track.
It's a nice surface. I hadn't had a chance to get on it. It's, it is different.
Yeah, I was down on it when they were installing it and it was, it's pretty neat. So we'll see where that leads us.
Maybe we should have a little race down there.
Between administrators.
Right, or board members or stuff like that.
Get our sundogs out.
Maybe the student council can do that instead of having the, the quiz bowl.
I'd also just like to report on the Raptor and Keless entry. It has gone really smooth. I'd like to thank Don A. Burt, Keith Hotchkin, Dennis Simo, Gene Rogie. We spent a Thursday entering key cards when they came in and it took us about five hours straight to enter everybody's number into the system. And we had a few mistakes, but not too many, so it's really going well. Had some contractors in with the wireless, or with the badge system, the Raptor system, and they were actually kind of funny because they're very used to doing it because a lot of schools already have the Raptor that they go into. So it's been received really well.
Just one oversight. The board members didn't get a card.
You want a card to the buildings?
So we can get in? Yeah. Tim had to ask them.
Thank you, too.
Thanks. Just a suggestion.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Scott? Okay, thank you very much. We'll now have the opportunity for the public to address the board. Anybody addressing the board shall give your name, address, and we will have thirty minutes? Three minutes per person, though. Okay. We'll take it. Consent agenda. We have approved the minutes from the December board meeting, approved the treasure report for December. We have 803 as employment. We have 804 as donations and grants. 805 is the statement of purpose budget reports. 806, statement of purpose budget, the two of them, budget reports.
805 is for the current school year.
Oh, current school year.
And 806 is for one for next school year.
Thank you. 807 is supplemental appropriations and 808 is stipends.
So moved. Oh, I'm sorry.
Motion by Henry?
Second.
Second by Perez. Discussion.
Roll.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. Perez?
Yes.
Dr. Hoida?
Yes.
Mr. Widman?
Upstain.
Dr. Gase?
Yes. Move on to action items. 9.01, approve the 2019-2020 Tiffin-Columbian Curriculum Guide.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Henry, second by Widman, discussion. Take the roll.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. Widman?
Yes.
Dr. Hoida?
Yes.
Mr. Perez?
Yes.
Dr. Gase?
Yes. The 9.02 is the approval of the 2019 and 2020 Tiffin Middle School Curriculum Guide.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Henry, second by Widman, discussion.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. Widman?
Yes.
Dr. Hoida?
Yes.
Mr. Perez?
Upstain.
Dr. Gase?
Yes. 9.03 is the approval of North Central Ohio ESC Consultants Services for fiscal year 19.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Henry, second by Widman, discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. Widman?
Yes.
Dr. Hoida?
Yes.
Mr. Perez?
Yes.
Dr. Gase? Yes. 9.04 is approval of college credit plus partnership agreement with Owen State Community College for 2019-2020 school year.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Henry, second by Widman, discussion. Roll.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. Widman?
Yes.
Dr. Hoida?
Yes.
Mr. Perez?
Yes.
Dr. Gase?
Yes. Item 9.05 is approval pupil activity permit.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Henry, second by Widman, discussion. This is for Richard Brodman for Reston, seventh and eighth grade.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. Widman?
Yes.
Dr. Hoida?
Yes.
Mr. Perez?
Yes.
Dr. Gase?
Yes. 9.06 is approval of the Halbert Survey LLC Proposal.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Henry, motion, or motion by Henry, second by Widman, discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. Widman?
Yes.
Dr. Hoida?
Yes.
Mr. Perez?
Yes.
Dr. Gase?
Yes. 9.07 is approval memorandum of understanding with OAS, OAPSE number 57.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Henry, second by Widman, discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. Widman?
Yes.
Dr. Hoida?
Yes.
Mr. Perez?
Yes.
Dr. Gase?
Yes. And 9.08 is approved the transportation agreement with the Tiffin Service Cab Company.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, Henry, second, Widman, discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. Widman?
Yes.
Dr. Hoida?
Yes.
Mr. Perez?
Yes.
Dr. Gase?
Yes. Item 10, the opportunity for the public to dialogue with the board. The topic for this evening is literacy. And as the board president, my, one of my goals has been, will be to make literacy a foundational objective in terms of using our program committee specifically to identify and try to implement further programs and to advance the agenda of literacy, not just in terms of Tiffin City School, but the, the region entirely. And so some of the concepts and some of the ideas will come from the, the text that Mr. Barber gave to all the board members regarding the 90% literacy goal, which I believe is something that we could certainly strive for. With that, open it up to anybody who'd like to come and discuss ideas or thoughts they might have about literacy in the community. We know that it's absolutely fundamental. Some of the things I didn't realize in terms of early, early childhood education and the idea that children, of course, the more words they hear, the better their language skills are, just the sheer volume of words they hear. Something as simple as learning to read or identify the written word from left to right, that's a pretty important thing that kids will learn. And as I said, I'd like to see if we could have the entire community. So we're looking at involving city government, county government. We'd like to see, there are some things that I think with our literacy program, we have some money from the Meckish Frost Foundation and my wife is looking at, again, is looking at spending some money for, there's some marketing we can do with the money, there's some advertising we can do within a limited scope. But because there's a certain amount of money we have to use within the year, we're going to try and expand the program, the Dolly Parton program, earlier than we initially anticipated. So I'll make the formal announcement that we will be soon advancing the enrollment to all children five years and under. So we will be looking to do that in the near future. So we, as of now, we took newborns from 2018 on, but we'll begin to expand that then. Would you like to say something?
Yeah, just, I, I think, I think you're, you're right on with, you know, involving city leadership, county leadership, the library, because I think, I think the important thing, the two important things, and I'm sure you got from the book, is, is one is, is access and making sure that they have the print material in their hands and it's, it's, it's grade-appropriate or age-appropriate from that perspective. But the other thing is just constantly saturating the message of how important it is to read to your child 20 minutes a day, every day. I mean, that, that's the message that I think would, would really be cascaded by everyone, every chance they get preaching that to our community. Because, you know, with, with the struggles, with, 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 with parents and time and all the challenges that go with that, that's, that's often the one thing that, that comes off the plate. And you're right, the more you read to a child, the better, the, the more words they understand, the better the vocabulary. There's lots of research that, that tells us that. But, but I think that, you know, getting some, some folks together, I think having some billboards with some recognizable figures in the city, reading to a kid and, you know, messaging that 20 minutes a day, every day, would, would go a long way.
Yeah, I think that's, there's lots of opportunities. I think we could collaborate with, with our foundation as well as the Tiffin City Schools. And I think the, the other thing is that if you're, if, personally, I thought to myself, if I'm going to spend any time promoting any one agenda, then literacy would have to be the number one. I mean, as, as all educators, I think, would agree. If we aren't educating our populace to the fullest extent, we're, we're not, we're not doing a service to the entire community or doing a disservice to the entire community if we don't move to get that literacy by the third grade. The thing that's, I was also surprised by is that most, most people would think, oh, if you didn't get there by third grade, well, let's work on it by fourth grade. Doesn't work. Doesn't work. It's by the time you get to fourth grade, if you haven't identified and haven't worked to achieve that level, you don't get that back. You don't get those, that development back. You don't get those, that development back. It's by then, someone's a die is cast.
Carissa Allen, 135 Clinton Avenue. As you were talking about, like, people and organizations or whatever, maybe even like the Tiffin YMCA, I can't think of a better place where families go and that we could, you know, somehow promote that. As I was sitting, listening to you, I volunteer and coach the little gymnastics groups, so I have like three-year-olds, well, four-year-olds up to like six-year-olds, and I was just thinking, like, how could I even, in my coaching there, do something with the literacy aspect? Because, you know, a lot of times, families will stress that sport component, but somehow with, you know, the sports connect the literacy there, too. So, maybe even getting our sports teams involved somehow, community service or something like that. I, I think it does have to be a community thing, and I think the younger we can get volunteers to help out, the better success we're going to have with the program as well. Because, you know, as a 40-something, kids look at me like, yeah, whatever. But, you know, if they have a junior or senior in high school talking to them and telling them about it, they're, they're more apt to listen sometimes. So, just some, some extra thoughts for that.
Great idea. I mean, you know, they're literary champions all throughout the community. We could all contribute, I'm sure. Thank you.
I had actually an idea, because student council comes into some of the schools and reads to the kids. What if there was like a program that we set up where like maybe on certain days, we had student volunteers who stayed with the kids 20 minutes after, 20 minutes after school and read to them?
Great idea.
It's kind of a stretch, maybe, but maybe with your 30, 45-minute delay or whatever we're going to decide on Wednesday mornings, you can use educational aids to, you know, create a spot where kids can come in and read, and other students can come in and help the other students just kind of...
Yeah, like, like high schoolers could come in and read to those kids as well, be part of it.
You know, because we're worried about, you know, how are, how are these parents going to adjust, adjust to this? And what about if they didn't have to? You know, it's just a separate time slot, so.
Another good idea.
That's a really good idea.
Yeah, I mean, I think, this is kind of the, one of the things that came up in the visit advisory council meeting, was that a project where you take the, an actual, this is one of the things that I may propose, you actually take a problem that an industry is actually trying to solve, and you get students, because students come up with ideas and have a different perspective. So getting ideas of students, and much like we have our board representatives, we look to have ideas coming from students who are actually on the ground. This reminds me of a program that I saw at the board, the board retreat, not the board retreat, but the OSBA, two years ago, where they took the junior achievement program and trained juniors and seniors in high schools to go to the elementary schools and do JA through the school year. And it turned out that the, the high school students got just as much out of it as the elementary students in that they learned the technique for education and stuff that they would use in their future in terms of career goals. So, great idea, thank you.
I have a comment. There's, if we approach the faith-based organizations, the churches in the town, I know that we have days that they give out food or they give out other things, they open their pantries, it might be a way to make connections with their parents, or we do the free lunches through school. If we can do maybe some like breakfast event on weekends where they do reading with some volunteers in exchange, they get breakfast or something like that. I know that, that was like our pizza thing that we did over the summer that worked out that way. I mean, we used a pizza delivery, but that was something that got people out in exchange. You know, they got their pizza, but they also did, we could tap into that community that way.
Another good idea. Any others? Thank you very much. Any other board discussion? Anybody have any topics that you'd like to address? Okay, very good. There will be an executive session, so I'll need a motion to enter an executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, Henry, second, Widman. Roll.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. Widman?
Yes.
Dr. Hoida?
Yes.
Mr. Perez?
Yes.
Dr. Gase?
Yes.
Do we have to put the reason on the record, Sharon?
There, oh, that's right. There will be, yeah, the executive session will have three items. They're going to court action, discuss employment of a public employee, and, is that it? Just two items, okay. And there will be no action. Thank you very much. Our next meeting will be February 26th, 7:00 PM, right here at the middle school capitol.